Seeing that, it's November 18th, 7:00 PM. I'm going to open up the hearing for the Country Club Estates 40B project on a Zoom meeting. We have present from the members of the zoning board of appeals. We have Peter Persson, Jerry Joy, Dan Bosari, Bob Durgan, and myself, Robert Gaynor. Also monitoring and sending and coordinating the Zoom meeting will be Mr. Seeley, Charlie Seeley. So, yes, why don't we commence from there? I think for the most part, like Charlie said, tonight, we were going to have a presentation from the applicant regarding what his plans are and what the general consensus of the of the project is going to be. From that point, I'm going to ask our peer engineers, Mr. Piznola and Mr. Brennan, to give their comments after the review of the proposed details. And then I'll open it to questions from members of the board. And then we'll see what we have for time. I'd like to, it's my intention to limit these meetings till 9:30 at night. I really don't want to go past, I think it's 7:00 to 9:30 is plenty of time for each session that we're going to get in within the 180 days. You know, when more appointments and more hearings have to be had, we'll work that out to get in compliance with that 180-day time limit. Other than that, oh, then after that, I intend on certainly opening up to questions and comments from the public. That will bottom line, my intention is to limit questions and comments to three persons, not three persons, three minutes for each person to be able to get to as many people in the public as we possibly can to hear their comments and so that the board hears their comments. And we'll take it from there. Charlie, did I miss anything?
No, other than, as you pointed out, this is not the only session you're going to have. You'll have tonight, either you'll write out things to say or write out people or whatever, but you have every intention of continuing the hearing, you know, for a subsequent date so that if there, for some reason, people don't have an opportunity to speak tonight, they're going to have an opportunity later. If they have questions that get unanswered, we'll make sure they're in the record and we'll work to get answers during the next month. If they're, basically, this is not the only chance people are going to have to participate in this. People will continue to be able to send questions into the ZBA in the meantime and everything else.
Right, Charlie. And as you and I discussed, even if people weren't able to attend a Zoom meeting, they could still send their questions or comments in on email so that it would be brought to the board's attention during the process.
Yes, yeah.
I think that pretty much covers it. I'm thinking, just on a brief outline, six probably, either seven, maybe a good seven meetings during the 180-day process period that we could have, we could get in and cover bottom line, whatever we need to cover. That's my general consensus. So, why don't we start out with a presentation of what the proposed project is going to look like? And Mr. Cousins, you have your gentleman there ready to go?
Yes, I do.
Okay, if you'd like to proceed, that would be great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Paul Cusson of Dulphic Associates, and thank you, Charlie, as well. We are the 40B consultants for this particular development. And with us tonight, we have Larry Silver, who is the engineer from Silver Associates, and also Rebecca Batista, who is engineer working also with Larry. The application was submitted to the board back in February and on behalf of John Peck, who was the manager for RNJ LLC, who was the applicant. We also had submitted a traffic report by Green International, Mr. William Scully, who submitted that to the board. It's kind of an unusual situation where we had submitted the application back in February and shortly thereafter, about a month thereafter, the COVID, everything got delayed as a result of COVID. So this is our first meeting, you know, informational at this stage. However, we're sort of fortunate in respect because prior to the COVID actually shutting things down, we did have a discussion and we did receive approval to submit plans to the board's consulting engineer and also to the traffic engineers and spoke to your consultants, you know, Joe Piznola and also Pat Brennan. So what we, Mr. Chairman, with you, I can do a couple of things. We could start with the development or I can explain, I'm not sure how many of the board meeting, board members and members of the public understand the 40B process and why we're actually before the zoning board of appeals, whereas some folks would be questioning why we're not before the planning board. So with your permission, I'd be glad to explain the 40B process a little bit, if you think that's appropriate.
Well, actually, since you brought up a point, we had during our meeting in May of this year, where you said we were trying to submit letters, submit plans to our consultant engineers. I believe Mr. Brennan, I'm going to, I planned on asking him to address that. He sent us a letter with some 30-some-odd points, give or take, regarding the plan. And I asked him if he had received any response back from the applicant. And since May, here it is November, we haven't received anything at all. So I was wondering if your engineer, Silver engineers, had either did not receive those requests or have not, some reason why they weren't information passed back and forth.
Yeah, I'll let Larry address that, or Rebecca address that. To my understanding, they did receive some comments. I know we spoke about a few things.
Yeah, it was a letter from Mr. Brennan from May 18th, 2020.
Correct. And we have that letter. And basically, and I'll let Larry speak to that, basically, they're discussing some additional engineering details that may or may not be required or possibly could be a condition of a permit.
Oh, did they make Mr. Brennan aware of that? Because as far as I know, I didn't think he had heard any response regarding that.
No, everything was basically, everything basically was on hold because of COVID.
Oh.
Paul, if I could speak for a second.
Sure.
Yeah, Rebecca, if you could put on the screen, there was the original May 18th letter that we received. And then on July 22nd, we forwarded a response to each point that had been raised in that letter. And we made adjustments to the plan in order to reflect those comments. So there has been interaction.
Oh, good.
And there was a response to the, you know, to the comments that had been raised. There are still some items in there as in the responses, the ones related to, I think, drainage. To finalize some of the drainage comments, we would need to make some adjustments to the calculations and so forth. But we felt that it was more prudent not to do that until after we had had at least this meeting or subsequent meetings.
Okay. All right. So Larry, why don't you start with your presentation? We can all get over.
Mr. Chairman, before we do that, I think it's important for me to state that, you know, typically what happens is that from a plan point of view, completing the engineering plans, it's very, it's supposed to be very similar to that of a planning board, when you would meet with a planning board, present your plans, there would be comments coming back from the planning board and or their consultants, you know, a couple of meetings back and forth. And then eventually, the planning board would issue their decision. And typically, the decision, you then have to submit definitive plans. So it's sort of the same way here. We had the opportunity to prepare some of the plans. Larry has responded to those plans as well. So we're pretty far along in that preliminary process. There's still more to be discussed and possibly more to be submitted. But I think it's important that the plans do not have to be 100% completed without getting, you know, some feedback from the board and from their consultants. So Larry, if you want to go forward?
Well, sure. The plans that we submitted for Country Club Estates is a 13-page set. So it has a lot of detail. Sometimes on 40B projects, the detail is more schematic than it is, you know, fully engineered. In this case here, we have engineering details similar to what you would submit for a subdivision. So we did approach it from that point of view, providing a lot of detail. It's a, the road, the entrance to this, to the subdivision or to the Country Club Estates is at the lights that exist on 106, next to the Mizrahi Farm Stand, which is to the left of the entrance road. And I believe there's a building under construction to the right of that entrance road now. I believe it's a, I think it's a motor company or something that is going in and that parcel next to it. And so that the roadway, so this, the sheet that's up there shows what was the existing conditions at the time that we initiated our work. And it included depiction of wetlands that had already been approved from the Conservation Commission at an earlier date. So we kind of knew what we were working with as far as available area. We had also completed boundary survey work and everything that was needed in order to depict this accurately. The property abuts the golf course, which is really the real draw to this, to this project, is to have housing that would be adjacent to the golf course. And the land that is utilized for this is comprised of three pieces. One that's 0.41 acres, there's another 1.27, and another 3.75 acres, bringing the total acreage for the project at 5.43 acres. There would be, if we can go to the next sheet there, to show the layout. So here, here's a layout of what we're proposing here, is that you can see that it's a sort of an L-shaped roadway with a cul-de-sac at the end. There's a series of building sites. There are five duplex units and five quadruplex units that make up the 10-building, 30-unit count for this design. We have about 900 feet of roadway. We have provided for utilities entering to serve this. There would be a common septic system that would be adjacent to the golf course itself. And there would be municipal water serving the project. And we have shown it looped, going back out in order to be able to show adequate pressure as required by the water department. There is drainage associated with the roadway, which gets collected and then conveyed through into the golf course and then through normal stormwater management features. And it actually, in some ways, is an advantage that it is a golf course because, you know, they're always looking for additional water as far as being able to use it possibly for maintenance. It's also where I send most of my golf balls, anyway. So the, there were a number of comments in the initial set of plans that we had provided. And in those comments, each one of those that Amory had provided, a lot of them resulted in some refinements of the plan. And in that letter of July 22nd, we took each comment and then provided for a response to it in order to give a, you know, sort of a roadmap as to how to follow the adjusted plans that had been provided.
Larry, can you send the board a copy of that? Because I know we don't have that, a copy of your response letter.
Well, it was, it actually went to you folks, so I don't know. I was a little surprised because it was addressed to the town of Halifax zoning board of appeals.
Oh.
So we can provide you whatever you want.
Yes, Alana?
Um, I just sent it to you guys again in case you couldn't find it.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
I just sent it to the zoning board in case you misplaced it or can't find it.
Oh, it was forwarded to us, though?
I just sent it about 10 minutes ago, five minutes ago.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. Thanks, Larry. Appreciate it.
Was it previously submitted, do you know?
Yes.
I thought so, okay.
Yes, it was in July. It was on that date is when it was sent out. Okay, so some of the items, I mean, you can go point by point as far as what their comments were, but I don't know how you want to handle the review and whether or not you want your review engineer to deal with those issues or not. But what we've tried to do was to address each one of them in terms of response, whether or not it was a complete finished response or one that indicated what we would be doing in order to address the comment.
I would rather you finish your presentation and then we'll address any other things as we go on.
Yeah, so I mean, as far, I'm pretty much done as far as an overview. I mean, I will say that one of the, one of the items which is, which is critical to this project is to make sure that, from a drainage point of view, that we do not impact the neighborhood. And even prior to this project being submitted, I had worked with the Algers, because John Peck had asked me to work with the Algers relative to their property and to make sure that we would incorporate improvements that would resolve some sort of longstanding kind of issues that were in that area. So when you see an updated plan from here, you will see some of those items incorporated into the plan set. And it's basically just to better manage the water that comes from this project and comes from the existing brook and takes it over to the golf course and minimizes the impact to the Alger property. Because it kind of is kind of routed now in such a way that it gets closer to like where the dwellings are. And what we're proposing is to move it further out and basically improve the situation as John Peck always wanted to have it done. So that would be reflected in the drainage updates once we, once we incorporate those into the plan itself. Because I know that it wasn't clear as to what was happening with regard to that. But the drainage, to me, is the major item or the major potential impact to most projects. And so therefore, it's something that we really pride ourselves on trying to make sure that we deal with those aggressively in order to make sure that the project is not only good for the proponent, but it's also one that's not detrimental to the neighborhood itself. Aside from that, we addition, some of the comments required us to add some additional parking. And we did that. We had a central mail area that you can see that Rebecca is highlighting there, in which we added some parking spaces there. And also at near the cul-de-sac, we added a few additional parking spaces in that location in order to get the required number up from what we had shown. I don't, when you think about a project in terms of its potential impacts to the neighborhood, you have, in this area, it's primarily commercial around the project, with the exception of, like I said, the Algers home, there's not really a lot of residential on that side on the northern side of the project or the western side from the entrance road. And then when you look from the Mont Ponce side, the closest homes that are on that side are beyond the Shelby shopping area there, where there are some houses that go further, are further down the road, abut the street, and they really abut the golf course. So they're kind of buffered from the actual development from, because of the golf course. I think it's, it's something that it's, would be a real asset to the town, from my point of view, providing some nice residential units close to a golf course that they both can benefit by the fact that they're in proximity to one another. So that's pretty much my overview. And, you know, from there, I'd answer whatever questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Charlie, is Mr. Piznola or Mr. Brennan on board?
Yes, I'll bring them up.
Thank you.
Both of them right now have live mics.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Hi, Joe, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Not too bad. Joe, if, I'm looking for your picture here. Joe, if you could, either you or Mr. Brennan start out, one of the other, I'd like to hear your overview and your opinion on.
Yeah, I think it's best for me to start and for everyone tuning in to understand our roles between Pat and myself. I am Joe Piznola with Hancock Associates. I am the Mass Housing Partnership 40B consultant that's been assigned to the Halifax CBA to help facilitate and assist the board through the process. My role is not to review anything technically, although I am a licensed civil engineer. My role is more in making, having, allowing the board or affording the board an expert who understands the full gamut of the 40B process. I think Mr. Cusson has mentioned some things, as well as Mr. Silver, with regards to, with regards to some of the differences between a 40B project and a project that might be before the planning board or what have you. So my role is to help the board, you know, guide through the process. As part of that, I will be giving the board memos on a monthly basis to track the progress and to try to structure the subject matter for upcoming meetings, give recommendations to the board from that standpoint, and to assist staff in reviewing the information that comes in and logging that in and so forth. And always here to help the board and answer any questions with regards to the 40B process and what's allowed and what's not allowed, what's fair game and what's not. And then, but towards the end, I can assist in the board in beginning to craft the decision and understand what goes into a decision of this type. I did present to the board my initial review back in March, on March 31st. And the purpose of that review was to look at the regulatory requirements for submission of a 40B and also the regulatory requirements with the content of what's submitted to the board. And I can run through that quickly. There are three main reasons, three main thresholds or things that an applicant needs to have to submit a 40B to a ZBA. And those are, they need to control the site, they need to have a subsidy, or, and that's evidenced by a, what's called a project eligibility letter from the subsidizing agency. And they need to commit to be a limited dividend organization. And I'll explain these a little bit, one by one. First is site control. And they need to control the site in which they are applying for the 40B project. And that control can be in form of ownership. It could be a purchase and sale agreement. It could be a lease agreement. In this case, they have presented a deed from a related entity of the applicant. And that looks to be in order. I did pose a question with regards to that, that the applicant, it escapes me whether or not he responded to this, if the applicant has responded. But the deed's for 8.7 acres. And as was described earlier, the project is about five, a little over five acres. So we need to understand the difference between the deed at 8.7 and what the project is at five and five and change acres. Additionally, with regards to site control, there is the issue of easements. There's an easement for stormwater and there's an easement for the septic system. And I didn't see those within the submission term, but that is also a part of proving site control, that they have those easements from the golf course and that those are in place and in proper form and function. That is a form of site control with regards to easements. The second item is the project eligibility letter. And I think the board has seen that, that's in the package. And that was from Mass Housing issued in June of 2019. That is still valid. And even if the project changes, the Mass Housing believes that that's a valid letter until they get through this process to ZBA. And then the last item is a limited dividend organization. And essentially, no such legal entity as a limited dividend organization. What it is, is a separate entity that is for just this project because their finances will need to be controlled within the life cycle of this project. And they need to commit to a limited dividend of no more than 20% of total project costs. I believe this is a for-sale project. And the way that that happens is through execution of a regulatory agreement between the applicant and Mass Housing. And that regulatory agreement, among many other things, has a, codifies the commitment by the developer to limit their profit. uh, to limit their, um, profit to that 20%. Uh, at the end of the project, there is an audit that's, that's, that, that, uh, the applicant has to present the financials of the project, all of the costs and all of the revenue, uh, that's reviewed, um, by a monitor and, um, they, proving that they didn't exceed that 20%. If they exceed the 20%, the windfall or the, the percentage over 20% um, is returned to the town, it, it has to go to the town, uh, to be applied for the town's purposes of, of providing or creating affordable housing. Um, so it, it, I, I stand, other than the questions on the, the deeds and the easements, um, I believe that they, um, I think they're there. They just need to provide that additional documentation. In reviewing, uh, the actual submission package, um, there are, you know, not a, a long list of things that they need to provide. Um, but, and, uh, first on that list is preliminary development plans. Uh, and as was stated, the, the development plans do appear to be, uh, a little bit more than that. That certainly are, uh, complete enough for, uh, for Pat to do the initial review and, and have, uh, dialogue back and forth between the, the engineers. Uh, an existing condition plan and report on the surrounding areas and that, uh, was submitted, um, by Silva Engineering dated January 20th, uh, signed and stamped by a professional land surveyor. Preliminary scaled architectural drawings, uh, were included in the package prepared by Dennis J. Swart dated August of 2018. They need to provide a tabulation of the proposed building type, footprint, impervious coverage, open space, all of those, uh, uh, parking, you know, all of that. Um, and that is satisfied, uh, the tables appear on the site plan. They need to provide a preliminary subdivision plan if the project involves subdivision. It's, uh, this is not a subdivision. It's not in single family lots. It's, it's most likely a condominium form of ownership. Uh, but there may be a subdivision required to clear up the disparity between the eight acres and the five acres, uh, remains to be seen. But if there was a subdivision required, you know, it, it really depends on what it is. If it was to break the eight acres into five and three, um, and the three was not part of the project, that might be best served to be an A and R, um, endorsed by the planning board in a separate, separate item. But we can hear from the applicant as far as what, what, what the disposition of that. Um, preliminary utility plans, they've, they've, uh, completed that. Um, and a list of waivers or relief that they're seeking within the comprehensive permit. Understand that those waivers, uh, are commonplace in these 40B, uh, projects. And the ZBA is used to dealing with what's known as variances under, uh, Master General's 40A and the very high bar that's required to grant a variance, uh, in, in a normal circumstance. That bar is a little bit different here and the, and the grant of waivers is seen to be, uh, part and parcel with the, the 40B, uh, project. And, uh, one premise that the board needs to understand is that the, the presumption is that the need for affordable housing outweighs the local concerns. And the local concerns here are defined by zoning requirements, other local requirements, uh, of the Board of Health and, uh, uh, Conservation Commission, anything that routinely is asked for waivers. Um, and that granting those waivers is seen as, uh, abiding by that baseline presumption. And the need for affordable housing is, is, uh, defined as the community being less than 10%. Um, which is why they're here. Um, so when we get to waivers and we get to review of the waivers, um, just need to meter that and, and kind of take the, the normal ZBA variance, um, approach to those. And, and look at it from the standpoint of, of, of the whole, uh, the whole project. They do have to be enumerated and there does need to be discussion on each of the waivers as far as why and to what degree. So if they're looking for setback variances, I would recommend that they be enumerated where they are, how much they are and not just blanket waivers, not just vague, um, waivers. And I, I have not looked at the waivers list in, in some time to see the specificity of them. But again, the, the waivers list can evolve through the process as the plans will evolve through the process. So we'll be looking for a finalized waiver list or interim waivers list as, as the project, uh, evolves. Um, an important part of, of this process has already started as we've discussed, and that's the procurement of third-party peer review. Uh, and Armory and Pat are, are here and, uh, have provided that. That's been funded by the applicant through a, a 53G account and that's all seems to be in order. The other most important part is, is comments from the other municipal boards, communities and town staff. Some of that's rolled in, but we want to make sure that those other entities are engaged and understand changes as they change, um, and that we can, uh, continue to get. That's, that's something that should be part of the process throughout, um, the seven meetings as the chairman mentioned, uh, that we're forecasting that could be, could be done. And lastly, I have, uh, presented, all the dates are all wrong because of the COVID, uh, laps. But essentially, uh, what I've done is laid out a series of meetings, topics, trying to work in descending order of impact to the project, um, uh, and looking at areas that, that might not maybe i- i- impact, um, detailed design, but might be global. And then trying to work, whittling down, getting closer and closer, um, uh, while trying to, uh, you know, move systematically through the, through, through the process to get, to be as efficient as possible. This will, this is, that will have a life of its own. It will be dynamic. It will, it will change. And I will work with the board to, um, to make sure that, you know, the, the board's input is taken and, and you, you as a board and as chairman, you as the chairman drive, uh, drive the process. I am here just to, to help and to, to usher the process, uh, through. And with that, uh, um, that's an overview of, of where I am at with regard to the project. Um, I don't know if you want to have the applicant address the couple of points that I made, questions that I had, or if, um, we can move on to, uh, to Pat's.
I, I would, I would like to continue with the, uh, with the review from the, uh, peer engineers. Pat, could it, did, did you, did you want to, uh, finish up and follow up on that, please?
Uh, Mr. Chairman? Hello? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Pat.
No, it's Paul.
No, I, I understand. Uh, I just, I wanted to hear from.
Well, I thought before I get that, I just, uh, Joe suggested that he had a couple of comments if I wanted to adjust.
No, no, he said that if I wanted to address them now, we could, but I'd like to complete the engineer background. You, and then, and then I'll get right to you, Paul.
That's fine. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Yes, Pat.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Pat Brennan with Amory Engineers. Um, I reviewed the project and it, uh, actually my letter is up on the screen now, uh, from May 18th of this year. Um, in the letter, I had a number of, uh, comments related to zoning, about 12 comments on zoning, four comments on the roadway slash driveway design and another 14 comments on utilities and stormwater management. Um, I, and I apologize, uh, up until tonight, um, I was not aware that Silver Engineering had started or had actually issued a response letter and revised plans. Um, during the meeting, I reached out to both Rebecca Baptista and Arlena and, uh, they both sent me that, uh, the response letter and, and Rebecca also sent me the revised plans. So I, I will go through those. Um, I'm not sure if you want me to go, you know, looking at their response letter, um, especially with my comments related to zoning and where I identify additional variances that I think that they need. Um, most of those responses, they said they have, um, requested those additional variances in, in their updated waiver list. Um, again, I haven't seen that and this is, I'm just seeing the letter tonight for the first time. The, the comments related to the roadway and drainage, um, the roadway, uh, my first comment was related to the project driveway and its location with the driveway to the Stop and Shop across the street. The, the driveway is offset, um, the proposed project driveway is offset from the center line of the Stop and Shop driveway, about 10 to 15 feet to the west. Um, usually when you have intersections and roadways entering and exiting directly across from one another, you want the center lines to line up so that you don't have, um, conflicts with turning movements. You know, somebody coming out of that project driveway, um, lining up more with somebody exiting that, that, um, the Stop and Shop driveway. So, you know, one of my comments was to try to align that, um, so the center lines line up a little bit better. Um, I understand their response and, and what they're saying is that, um, and actually, yes, um, they're bringing it up there with that photo. Basically what they're saying is that there, there's a, there's a, a lot of infrastructure there that they would need to move in order to make that, um, those driveways line up correctly. The, as, as part of my review, you had asked me to send out the traffic report for peer review and I, and we did receive a peer review back from Gillon Associates. Um, he commented on, on that a little bit, um, but, you know, in the absence of actually lining those driveways up, uh, or lining the center lines of them up. His suggestion was when they do the signal timing is to have them, um, so that the, the project driveway and Stop and Shop driveway are not, um, exiting at the same time, you know, delay that. So project driveway exits than the Stop and Shop driveway exits or the, or vice versa, so that you don't have that oncoming traffic with potential conflicts. So, so that was, you know, one of my, uh, comments related to the, to the roadway. Um, my second comment related to the roadway, um, was that they were, they're proposing Cape Cod berms and they showed the sidewalk immediately adjacent to the Cape Cod berm. And if you're familiar with the Cape Cod berm, it's essentially just the asphalt just tapers up about three inches for either a foot width or, yeah, in this case it was a 12 inch width and then a sidewalk right along it. Um, I find that to be kind of a hazard for pedestrians, for somebody using that sidewalk, because there's no physical barrier between vehicular traffic and pedestrian traffic. Um, in their response, they've said that they've provided, um, a five-foot grass strip, um, along the sidewalk for the first 300 feet and then vertical curb provided against the sidewalk once they're beyond that 300 foot. Um, and, and that would address my concern. Um, again, I don't have the revised plans to see that or I haven't had a chance to look at them. But that, that five-foot grass strip provides that visual barrier. So you see that green strip in between where cars are and where pedestrians are. And the vertical curb, um, provides a, a physical barrier with the vertical curve itself, you know, six inch vertical curve. Um, so, so that, you know, those, those two, um, in combination would address my comment, um, on that. My other two roadway comments were in relation to plan edits, which I understand in their response, they're saying that they, they, they have changed. And again, I, I haven't taken a look at the plans to, uh, to verify that. Um, my comments in relation to the, um, utilities and the stormwater. The, reading quickly through their response letter, it looks like they have addressed those. Um, but most of those, uh, have to do with the drainage calculations. And I really don't want to have to get into drainage calculations and drainage design with the board, uh, because you all fall asleep on me. The, um, but again, like, you know, I'd like to have the chance to go through their response and, and check, and check those things. Again, I, I, you know, I had planned on presenting all these comments in a little more detail tonight, but since based on their response letter anyway, it looks like the majority of them are likely addressed on these revised plans and the forthcoming drainage calculations. Um, I don't know if it's worth the time going through them at this point in time. Um, because what I'll do is I'll review this letter, their response letter, the revised plans and then issue a, a new letter explaining, um, where we're at with each of my original comments, you know, whether it's been addressed, whether they still need to do something. Um, and, I mean, I, I think that's probably better use of time is for, for us, for us to proceed that way than to go through all these comments that may not be, um, valid anymore with revised plans. Um, uh, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think, uh, you know, we're given the chance, like you said, just looking it over quickly. Looks like they, they have, uh, complied a lot with the, with the revised calculations and whatnot. And, and you should at least have an opportunity to get a chance to review them over. And it may, like you said, be a blanket yes, okay, it looks good since they revised that and, you know, it's acceptable. So, uh, you know, I'd prefer that you do it that way myself.
Yeah, it, it makes better use of your time.
I agree.
There's a lot to review here and, and the details of the engineering, um, aren't that important to the board members as long as it's all worked out and it works.
Okay. Uh, anything else, uh? Um, Pat, your, your letter was pretty extensive there. I mean, as far, or have you not had a chance to review the, the variances or, or the waiver on the variances that were, that you had indicated in, uh, pages three through five and then, uh, if they have been addressed.
Yeah, well, they, in their response that are the, they say that any place where, pretty much any place where I say that I believe they needed a variance, they said that they've added those, uh, requests to their waiver slash variance request letter. Um, so again, u- until I'm able to review that document.
Right.
I can't, I really have not.
Okay. Well, Mr. As Mr. Peznola mentioned, uh, and I'm sure, uh, Mr. Cousins will, will be able to, uh, provide the, the board with a, with an updated list, a waiver list or, and or slash variance list. Uh, you know, to, to be completed as, as, as we get going, because it, 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 like you said, it will need to be revised and revisited, uh, and, and updated. And like you say, for a matter of time, it, it may have all worked out and everything can, uh, you know, be, be addressed like, like, uh, Mr. Peznola had mentioned. But an updated list from, uh, from the applicant is, I think is essential. Yes, I agree with you.
Yep.
Uh, anything else, uh, if you don't mind me calling you Pat, Pat, is that okay?
That's fine with me.
Utilities and stormwater, uh, the roadway and, uh, you're all good as far as, uh, at least to this point, until you have time to review that yourself.
Yeah, um, I, I, again, in my letter, I, I, I hadn't reviewed the septic system design because the board, that falls under the jurisdiction of the Board of Health, um, and at least in there, um, I forget whether Halifax has local Board of Health rules and regulations, but, um, they did not have any waivers from any local regulations on their original waiver request letter. Um, but I know that there was some concern about the, um, the shared septic system, the leaching facility actually spans the lot line between, um, this, uh, property and the golf course. Um, it's shown within an easement on the, or the portion of it that's on the golf course is shown within an easement area. Um, under Title V, uh, for new construction, the only way that you can construct any portion or place any portion of a septic system on a parcel that is not the same parcel that the facility served is on, you need a variance from Title V. Um, and that's a variance that they need to get from the Board of Health because it's from Title V. It's not from a local regulation. So that's something that they need to go to the Board of Health for, um, to, to get approval to do that. It's not something that the zoning board would typically weigh in on. Um, again, because it's a state law, it's not a local regulation.
Okay, we can, uh, we can try to cover that with, uh, uh, with either hearing from the Board of Health, I'm sure we will and, and, uh, and, and whatnot. Let me get, uh, I, I, are you all set then, Pat? Uh, you, you covered everything you wanted to at this point?
Yeah, until, until I have a chance to review the responses and revised documents, yeah, I'm, I'm all set at this point.
Okay, I was just, uh, looking quickly to see if I could, uh, hold that, is that Title V, Pat? Is that the, uh, the 310 CMAs, that 15.410? hold that. Is that Title V, Pat? Is that the the three-ten CMRs, that fifteen-point-four-one-zero, section two? To have components with a septic system on another parcel of land?
Correct. I can read that if if you'd like me to read that exact verse from Title V. Basically, I will. With regard to variances for new construction enforcement of the provision from which a variance assault must be shown to deprive the applicant of substantially all beneficial use of the subject property in order to be manifestly unjust. So again, that's that is an issue that they need to take up with the Board of Health and the Board of Health would have to grant that variance in order for them to have the septic system located on the Country Club property.
All right. Awesome. Thank you. Thanks, Pat. Let me go back to Mr. Cousins. Are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, yes, now you wanted to, now that we've finished with the engineers, what point did you want to make now?
Actually, a couple, and I have a question for Pat. We had, to my knowledge, we had submitted an easement that I think you had suggested that we acquire. So the applicant has acquired an easement, and I believe that, and if you didn't get it, we can send it again, should address the some of your questions. But the question I have on on septic Title V and maybe Larry can help too. If there's if there's a easement granted on the property, isn't that, can't you have the Title V on that easement parcel? That's site control.
I can check with the with the I do have the chairman of the Board of Health online here, I can double check with him, but
I was asking Pat if he had, if 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 he knew offhand if it has to be in in simple ownership or whether it can be in the form of an easement?
I did not read Title V where it an easement, I I think it needed to be in fee ownership. But I, you know, I would kind of defer to to counsel on that, Mr. Chairman, if that might be something to ask your counsel to see. Have have her weigh in on that and see what her opinion is on that issue.
Because that easement, that easement, it's right on the screen right now that 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 we were able to obtain at the request of, I think it was either Joe or Pat or both. The the only other question I had was was when Joe was describing the monitoring, not the monitoring, but the regulatory agreement and the profit limitation and so forth. At the end of the job, at the end of the development, the developer has to submit to Mass Housing an audited attestation cost certification report. And Mass Housing has to review that and approve that showing all of the income and the expenses and actually the return on costs. And if it happens to be more than twenty percent, Joe's absolutely right, that money has to go back to the town to be used for affordable housing. So there is a cost certification process that the developer must go through at the at the end of the development.
Okay.
So those are the only comments I had. So and I I think we do have a new waiver list, but I'll 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 work with with Larry and Rebecca to be sure that we have that we double check it and just be sure it's updated as best as we can. And we'll we'll submit that soon.
Okay, well, what my intention is now is to, I'd like to open up questions from zoning board members if they have any while reviewing the presentations that were just made. And also, I did notice that, like I had previously mentioned too, that Mr. Diaz is on there from the Board of Health, he he might be able to at least help me out in with a with the language in the Title V. You know, tend to help that. But I'll I'll start out with the members of the board first unless one of the members want to ask Mr. Diaz to question himself themselves, but anything else in the presentation that you guys would like to start off with?
I think the Title V variance is a big factor. Whether or not on top of the easement.
Okay.
Mr. Diaz, if you could answer that, if he knows?
Let me try to get an answer to that. Charlie, can you open up Mr. Diaz's?
Yeah, I put him on unmute. I know he was at a Board of Health meeting earlier. But he's now unmuted, so I'm not sure who's at the mic there, but somebody is.
Charlie, Alan Diaz, Co-Chairman, Board of Health, just want to go over that question again, or do you want to just handle the question on as far as the easement?
You know, if the Title V variance is required, if he has the easement?
Yeah, okay, let me just point out that the this project has been no plan submitted to the to the Board of Health for our review. We did get the forty B package. We did review the proposed septic plan. We did a response back to the design engineer with a lot of issues that we felt with the plan. One is the particular reason, it's the Board of Health's position that ownership must be, the septic system must be owned by the applicant. That's that's our position. We've discussed that. There is language in Title V that allows for the use of the variance, the grant of a variance, but in this particular case, there shouldn't be any reason why they can't either acquire that a property, but I don't see any manifest adjustments based on the fact that they don't want to buy the property. So it's our position that they're going to need to own that to locate the septic system and a reserve area. I hope I explained that correctly?
It sounds sounds pretty straightforward. I I do I do feel I do, as as Mr. Cousins has suggested, we would defer to counsel also, see if Amy Questle also, you know, concurs with the fact that, you know, the interpretation of of that that Title V section. Bob, does that answer your questions or do you need any?
It does. I think that's a big thing. If 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 they need the property and they can't acquire it, I think plans are going to change to make a septic system work.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I may, I don't know if if Amy Questle was on, but there's one particular section in Title V which is section fifteen-zero-zero-two under definitions, and that definition is a facility. And it's very clear in that definition that the ownership they must have single ownership and or control, and our position is single ownership.
So, Mr. Chairman?
And Alan, is it and or or?
Or control. But it goes on to say Title V can be a little little tough, goes on to say, single ownership or control pursuant to three-ten CMR fifteen-point-zero-zero-one, which is a nitrogen aggregate plan. And they have not filed a nitrogen aggregate plan on this particular project. So the definition of a facility, based on our understanding, is they need to own it.
Well, I guess my question would be then, and we'll defer back to Mr. Cousins there. I mean, at the very beginning, I think Joe pointed out that we're looking at a five-point-oh-four piece of acres of property and the deed states eight acres. So is there is there land there that can maybe simplify this whole matter, right? I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there.
I think we all have to research this a little bit more. I mean, it's it's my position that that an easement is equal to site control and couldn't could meet the requirements of Title V, but I'm not an expert in that area. So we'll refer also to your counsel and and I think our team will do a little bit more research ourselves on on this matter and hopefully we can simplify it somehow.
Yeah, Larry, you got any input on this?
Yeah, I have done it in the past. When it says ownership or control, easement is a form of control. Easement, just like a power company has easement, that means that they're able to do what they need to do within that piece of of land, even if it's owned by someone else. So the fact that you have control by by way of the easement, I believe satisfies Title V. We've done this many times in the past on on projects, residential projects. We just did it recently, I think, in East Bridgewater. It was a couple of house lots where the actual leaching field for the for the second house was actually partially on the first first lot. And it's basically if you have the easement in place, the language of the easement has to be very, very clear. And I think that that would have to satisfy, you know, both the ZBA and the Board of Health that it's that it does achieve the control. But I believe that it does. But I would leave that to the attorneys to to basically issue a legal opinion.
I did notice that, you know, in the in the binder that was provided for each one of the members that there were several pages regarding the easement agreement and and whatnot in there. Again, like you said, I'm certainly not an attorney either. I wouldn't be able to effectively determine whether it is or not. So Bob, Mr. Dergan, Bob, I can only say that I I don't know yet. You know, I think, again, we'll defer to as Mr. Cousins has suggested, Amy Questle, see if she in fact can can get us an interpretation of that, but I do believe to the the quick answer to your question, Bob, from from Mr. Diaz, was that they are going to interpret it that it needs to be ownership under a under the Title V CMRs there. So I hope that I hope that helps you out a little bit.
It does.
Okay. Dan, Peter, Jerry, anything you want to throw out here?
I think I'm fine at the moment. I'm just doing do a lot of research. There's a lot of information here tonight that I was concerned about drainage because of the past projects that we've been on and they seem to be addressing that.
I agree. I agree with you too, Jerry, that basically too, I guess a lot of your questions and whatnot that were brought up that I had had, you know, I guess have been addressed in, you're right, I do, I myself need some time to to go through that and kind of digest everything to see if to see that there were in fact answers to those those questions. Peter, Dan, anything?
My concern is the roadway. I know we we had looked at this when the plan first came out. I'm concerned about the lineup like the engineer mentioned about the the road.
I lost you. I lost. Charlie, I lost Peter. I can't hear him.
He's there. He's on the list. His mic's on.
Can anybody hear him?
I think it's from his side.
Peter, you're not coming in. We we missed it.
Sorry, you can you hear me?
Okay, now I can.
Okay, yeah, I'm just concerned about the the lineup of the the stoplight and the roadway, whether or not they have the the turning lanes and the frontage and everything that they need. You know, I just want to make sure that that's that's a safe intersection. I'm concerned about that.
Okay, as as long as you're on that subject, Peter, I did get a an email from Chief, the Fire Chief, Jason Baveros today, who who had addressed those the same issues that that you were just spoken about as far as the roadway goes. Below his comments, the town bylaw two-thirty-five-twenty-two states dead-end streets shall be provided at the closed end with a turnaround having an outside roadway diameter of at least one-hundred-and-twenty feet. It appears the proposed plan shows a cul-de-sac of less than ninety feet. It's important that the fire department has ample room to maneuver our largest pieces of apparatus in the event of an emergency. He provided, he did provide the calculations for the ladder truck, which has an overall length of forty-four feet with a wheelbase of eighteen feet five inches. So he figured the engineers would be able to be able to determine how big of a radius on the on the cul-de-sac would be needed on a on a public safety issue. As far as the roadway went, Peter, to 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 address your your concerns, he he went on for number two, the proposed plan shows a dead-end hydrant system. A loop system would be preferred for both flow and flushing. After consulting with the water superintendent, we feel the flow testing should be conducted on Plymouth Street in GPM estimates to be provided prior to approving the system. And I did hear the applicant make mention that some type of loop system had been changed or revised, but we could go through that. And the distance from the fire hydrant on Plymouth Street should be not more than five hundred feet to the first hydrant on the property. The plan does not indicate what the distance would be. And his last point, number four, was the building plans, it really doesn't have anything to do with the roadway, but this was his letter, his email. The building plans do not include a plan for a fire alarm systems. Fire alarm plans would be would need to be approved by the fire department prior to the issues of a building permit. Again, on the preliminary plans and whatnot, you know, I'm I'm sure the applicant will be able to address them if if they're not in there already. But just to go along with what you had said, Peter, he had he had submitted that to the board. If that answers your questions at all.
Chairman? Could you have Alana forward a copy of that to us, please?
Sure. Alana, could you make sure that they get a copy of that, please, Mr. Paul Cousins?
Yes, I will.
All right. Thank you very much. We did receive another letter too in regards to Mr. Diaz, where he had he had had just previously spoken. Received an email just today, please be advised the board that the planning board has not officially made any representations. I will be joining the meeting late. I do want the ZBA to know that the Board of Health position on the septic system, I I would make mention to the board that I have concerns about drainage, the underlying soils are a silt, mown clay, but that was also received today. I just wanted to put that or read that out so maybe Larry or somebody else can, will address that down further on in the schedule in our upcoming our upcoming meetings. But I didn't want to put them out there to figure the longer we have to, we have to prepare, the the better off everybody will be, you know? All right. Well, Dan?
Yeah. Yeah, I have a few questions about the septic.
Yeah.
And about the easements. I read through both easements, the drainage easement and the septic easement. I don't know, like an idiot, I read this whole thing twice. And Mr. Diaz said something I think is very important that's kind of got overlooked was the reserve area. So I I assume when he says a reserve area, I believe the term used is in case that system in the future fails, there's another area where you can create another leaching field. Is that correct?
I'd have to ask Mr. Diaz that. I I don't know.
Is he gone?
No, that's correct. That's correct. You do need a reserve area.
Okay, so when we're talking about, you know, an easement, not an easement, there's another issue in here. I forget who mentioned it. I have to go back and find it, but the privacy issue of those back units that border the easement, where where the easement is. I mean, if they did create a bigger lot and got rid of the easement, I think you're almost killing two birds with one, well, three birds. One, you don't have the easement. Two, you have a reserve area, which I think is absolutely necessary here. I mean, if that fails, what what are those people going to do? Who buy the places? And third, you're helping the privacy concerns. So that's kind of my my take on it is it does nothing but help all those issues. If we could create a lot that more to the size it should be. And I I think we absolutely have to have that reserve area.
Okay. Is that all you have right now, Dan?
Yeah, I was going to bring up the soil condition, but like you said, maybe at a later time. I just want to hear the Board of Health's opinion on that.
Joe, anything else to add to that, Alan, or?
The only thing I would add is that looking at top of foundation elevations and then looking at the silt loan layers, that the base of all of these foundations are directly on top of the silt loan layer, which is the clay. Um, that's very problematic with any potential flooding um with high groundwater modeling. Um, the you these units could potentially uh be inundated with water. Um, I can't say that a hundred percent because we don't have a plan that's been presented to the Board of Health. But uh, that was one of my concerns from the information that we've gotten so far.
Uh, Mr. Cousins from the chair, how uh how soon could you have those uh plans ready or at least a preliminary set of plans for the Board of Health to review?
Well, I have to uh refer to Larry. I mean, we we normally would not uh do a full set of uh septic system plans. I think it's um and Larry can answer that question, but I think we need to see if we can get the issue of that easement resolved. And we may need to do, and Larry can help me out, we may need to do some additional soil testing where the septic system is being proposed. Larry, you have any comments on that?
Yeah, we've we've already done percolation tests witnessed by the Board of Health in the area where the system is proposed and on the plans, we do have uh two pages that are actually dedicated uh to the septic system design. So uh it but as Alan has said, that we have not presented the septic system design to the Board of Health, although the details were in here, uh, and there are comments that were made about that design, and there'll be refinements to it. And then there will be a plan that will go directly to the Board of Health at that point. But I think this issue about the ownership and easement issue uh will be, uh, need to be hashed out before we actually do that. Um, and I will tell you, it's positioning where it is is because as you approach the golf course, that is where the soils change to be um more sand and gravel and actually deeper sand and gravel as you get it goes southerly.
It's possible that it's, I'm wondering whether these plans, uh, I mean, I know we submitted many copies of the plans. Uh, I'm not sure whether the Board of Health might not have even gotten this set of plans.
They said they did. They said they reviewed these plans, but they have not been presented to them for um for a submittal, and we wouldn't do that at this point.
Correct.
We would do that at a later date.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the submittal is is being made as as is. Um, you know, subject to to obviously trying to clear up the the issue of of the easement, et cetera. Um, and you know, if the soils prove out and so forth, the the sys- the actual design would be, you know, post-permit, subject to Board of Health.
Uh, I agree. I think that's what we're here for. You know, we'll uh we'll iron this out and uh okay. Take the information that are provided and and again, I agree, I think it's a good idea to check with uh well, with our town council and and see if we can uh, you know, clear up the matter. Uh.
So let me ask Larry, so let me ask Larry again, Larry, the additional comments that they're looking for on the plans and so forth, how much how much time do we need to maybe tweak the plans a little bit more?
I I I don't think that there's uh too much more to do to address the comments. I mean, I've only heard the comments that Alan has indicated tonight. If there are other comments and others other than what Pat has indicated in the letter, um, I mean, aside from that, I don't think that there's a lot of effort that needs to go into it. If it's a a change in ownership versus easement, then that may uh change how much time it'll take to deal with that issue. But I I do want to say that um the comments that are provided are very helpful. Alan's comment uh about the uh concern about the uh groundwater elevation as it relates to the foundations is uh is is a good comment. And we got to make sure that uh we'll look at that again and make sure that we're not uh putting these at an elevation that that may be problematic or or require a foundation drain in order to make sure that they function properly.
Uh, you know what I'd like to do too, if I wouldn't mind, uh, I'd like to refer to Joe, Mr. Pesnola, uh, in your experience, uh, that could you weigh in on this? Have you heard this? Been in your past experience with it? As far as the ownership and the easement go, then the Title V?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. I I think I think there's first of all, two issues here. One is with regards to this board's jurisdiction within the comprehensive permit under the the forty B regulations. Um, they've demonstrated what they need to for site control, and that's separate and distinct from from Title V and the and the Board of Board of Health issues. Um, and the the Title V issues are not the jurisdiction of this board. It's very common for the Title V plan to be submitted to the Board of Health, as Mr. Cousins says, post-permit after the ZBA has rendered its decision. Um, the details in this plan are much more highly developed than is normal and required uh under a forty B. So it does afford the Board of Health a little bit of insight into um what's coming down the road as far as a full design. Uh, and the board should ask for, the ZBA should ask the Board of Appeals um uh, should the Board of Health for for just input, the exactly what what the Board of Health is doing. Uh, raise the the major issues and leave the the details or the jurisdictional questions uh such as ownership from a Title V compliance to the board, independent of the the ZBA. Certainly, if uh you seek a um town council input from from Ms. Chrisell, that just helps. Uh, it goes to the 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 question, is this plan going to change? And is this is the ZBA wasting their time looking at a plan that's going to be entirely different because of this issue? And that that's fair and and.
So if in fact, the uh if in fact, they they do need a variance from the applicant needs a variance from the Board of Health uh for the Title V, really isn't a concern then of 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 the review and the process that we are doing now as the?
Not at all. It's it's.
Okay.
Board of Health retains full jurisdiction under Title V um and has to act, you know, independently uh and on that when a formal application for the septic permit is is given to them. And their role right now is just advisory to the your board. Um, so it it could be that this issue isn't definitively resolved until um, you know, until they make that submission. And 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 this board is is certainly uh free free to act upon the the petition as presented um because you're not being asked to to waive anything with regard to the septic um within the local uh Board of Health regulations. Um, it would just be a matter of whether or not you're wasting your time or whether you would have to then re-review a a plan change when they when they if they so choo- chose to not get definitive answers by waiting until this board act uh acted. I was, what I'm what I'm getting at is it's it's really up to the applicant. The applicant can choose to kick this can down the road and ask this your board to continue the process, notwithstanding the the uh the this Board of Health question um and move through all of the other issues. Um, and and you would still have to act within your one hundred and eighty days.
Okay, great. How about any other questions? So basically, uh, I'd like to hear comments from the members of the zoning board in regards to the project of itself. That's what uh I'm I'm hoping to uh even open it up to the public if we have have time for uh personal comments or whatnot. But I'd I'd like to start with the members of the ZBA and then and then uh move on to uh any any members of the of other boards in town before I uh uh accept and open it up to a public uh discussion. Uh, gentlemen, any anybody at all, the the project in general isn't isn't anything uh nonspecific uh? Uh, any concerns or or something that you'd like to maybe direct to the applicant now that we could uh we could hopefully uh discuss and get and get through before during the process of the of of the whole uh project of itself? I'm I'll open it up to any of the members, Jerry or Peter or Bob or Dan at this point?
No, I'm fine at the moment.
You guys?
I mean, I mean, I I definitely have concerns about the roadway um and about the the safety of the roadway itself, how it lines up to one oh six. Um, I I have a couple of questions as to and as to just the way the the lots have been used and why they're laid out the way they are. Um, there's that one looks like a duplex or something that's set up. It it seems like the applicant has ownership of those two other parcels in the front and chose not to use them. Uh, I I guess, you know, that that's their choice to do, but it would create I I I'm I I'm just interested to find out maybe um in the process um why it was set up the way it was. Um, and, you know, address those those concerns. It seems like they're covering every ounce of that uh the lots that they've chosen to to apply with. I mean, I I'm just interested to learn how they're going to light it, um, if there's going to be lighting involved and and how um, you know, how it's all going to be laid out. Those are my questions. But I think we're talking about big picture stuff in the beginning.
Maybe uh I I could ask Mr. Cousins that question because uh, to be honest with you also, Peter, I noticed that too on the on the site plan there that when you mentioned the uh the adjoining uh property there next to the to the roadway, the the pre-existing metal building that is there now, I I believe is within the thirty foot setback of uh of the uh of the lot, which when this, when the property, I believe, was divided into the three lots, uh, there was something made mention on the Form A that that building would be coming down because basically they created a non-conforming lot by living up there. You know, and 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 that is a a general concern. I thought it was with the stipulation and condition that the building would be coming down, and we wouldn't have that problem right now. Paul, do you have any any knowledge or any any information regarding that?
I I do not.
Okay, uh, well, I just had, you know, one other comment before I open it up to the elements too. I did notice that uh in the packet in the presentation that uh how many units now uh Paul or Larry will be affordable housing?
There there are thirty units in total.
Yep.
Of which uh eight units will be designated as as affordable. We have, there there are five um uh five duplex buildings and five four-unit type buildings. And there'll be in the uh, there'll be seven affordables in the four-unit buildings and one affordable in the in the two-unit building. So between, it's actually twenty-six percent. We we will, we will designate which units are to be affordable. Um, and we'll we'll be presenting a plan to the board, although the ultimate approval of that rests with mass housing. But we cannot, you know, they got to be distributed throughout the development. Hello? Hello?
Sorry, I think that Bert got himself out of there. Um, I think he's walking, he's getting himself back in. Just a minute.
Hi, Charlie, am I back?
Yeah, you're back. Sorry about that.
Okay, I don't know what happened.
I I don't know how much of that you heard. Um, there the the question was the I think was the where the affordable units are located. So there's going to be um a a total of of five two-unit buildings and five four-unit buildings. There's a total of twenty-five two-bedroom units, of which seven of those will be designated affordable. And there are five three-bedroom units, of which one will be designated affordable. The what they call the Affordable Distribution Plan, we will designate where uh the affordable units should go. They have to be distributed throughout the development. Um, and that ultimate approval um rests with the mass housing. But we will be submitting a a plan um and, you know, if the board has any comments, we're we're open to some suggestions in that regard.
Oh, good. Uh, I have a suggestion. Uh, we in a, some of the uh affordable housing projects that we've we've done in the past, the applicants have have agreed that uh of the of the affordable housing units that are going to be built, that Halifax residents would have preference uh or first choice or at least have preference over the uh available affordable housing units be offered to members of the town of Halifax before it was put outside.
Yeah, that that can be done. It's it's a maximum of seventy-five percent um by statute, by law, seventy-five percent of, I'm not statute, but by regulation, seventy-five percent of the units can of the affordable units can be set aside for what they call local preference. And local preference is designed is is like is uh explained in the regulations. Uh, basically, it would be uh offered to anybody who is an existing resident of Halifax, any town, any employees who work for the town, who work for the school department, and anybody who may not be living in the town, but if their children go to schools within the town, um, whether it be regional or local, can also be satisfied as 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 affordable. And whether the request for a local preference has to be made by the town to mass housing. And we can assist somewhat in that matter. But uh, so that's certainly something that that we're pretty familiar with and is done fairly often.
Right.
Good. Mr. Chairman, if I might add to that.
Who is this, please?
Joe Pesnola.
Oh, yes, Joe.
Uh, just just if if the town is desirous of of local preference and and I can verify that everything Mr. Cousins said was was true and correct. Um, but we the town, we should start that process uh early. Um, because one of the things that the state will make you do as a community is is justify that uh on a needs basis. So if your housing authority or anyone else in town has gathered information, that information will be important um to justify that uh because it it all goes to um compliance with the Fair Housing Act and making sure that there's no discriminatory actions taken. And there's, you know, that everything is right and ready. So there's a process there. Um, but it's it's best uh for for the town if again, if if this local preference is something you really want to do, which is great, that we just get going on it on kind of in parallel with this process. Um, just to get that, gather that information in the right format and um and and make sure it's ready for town. But you what you don't want to do is wait until Paul is um putting together the lottery and then rush, try to rush to get that local preference in and justify it because the timing just won't work. So so the earlier the better.
Okay.
Uh, I I agree with Joe completely. They they uh, so what actually ends up happening when you have local preference and you have the rest of what what they call at lodge is that when there's a lottery, um, the actual local preference um applicants also get the opportunity to go into that lodge. So they get their names get pulled twice.
All right. Uh, my my other concern, Paul, and maybe Larry can can help me out with this also. Uh, this whole project is going to be located right in the center of our town. Uh, I'm very much concerned with uh the appearance, how it looks from the outside uh with a traffic count of nearly sixteen thousand daily car count a day. Uh, what what's it going to look like? I know we've had, you know, some architectural designs on it. Uh, what can we do to improve this? I I see an awful lot of gigantic white overhead doors, which uh uh I'm, I guess I'm looking for some suggestions uh suggestions to to make this as nicest looking as possible where it's right smack in the middle of our town.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that that I would like to see, and I'd have to check more with the applicant and Larry, whether or not we actually have the room to do it, is is really create a a classy, nice entrance uh that doesn't obstruct any of the that doesn't obstruct any of the views, sight distance views when coming in and out of the development. And we can take a look at, I can take a look at the architecturals and see what we can do in order to dress that up. But the first house is going to sit, I don't know how many feet, it looks like about 300 or 400 feet at least from Plymouth Street. So I think the first impression would be the entrance.
Yes, I'm concerned with the shingles. You know, I didn't know if it's sprucing it up with clapboards instead, something that'll make it look nice, something instead of gigantic white overhead door. It's a minor point, Paul. I just thought, you know, where it's in the center of our town, I am concerned very much of what it looks like, you know?
I hear you. We can take a look at that.
Thanks, Paul. I appreciate that. All right, any other questions? I'll open it up to any other members, any other boards from our town that... Charlie, if you could let me know which person is signaling.
So Bert, I'll just, I'll walk, yeah, I'll walk this through. So we have the list in alphabetical order as it happens. And Alan, I know, has spoken, but I don't know if he has anything else to say. Then the next person would be Amy Troop. She's a member of the planning board. But Alan would be first in alphabetical order.
We lucked out Board of Health began with a B. How about, I'll ask...
I think Alan said, so I'll unmute Amy. I don't know.
Bert, can I just make one quick more point before we go into that?
Who is this?
It's Pete.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. On the parking, a little, the additional parking up front, I have a slight concern that while it might help the parking for the residents, because it's an area up front, it might not be used as much by those residents. I have a little bit of a concern that it just might be parking used right off of Plymouth Street. I don't know if that's going to be as effective as, you know, I worry a little bit about the driveways and if people are going to be parking on that roadway with the safety of the, you know, the fire and police coming down the road like they mentioned. But I worry a little bit about just having kind of vacant parking lots sitting up there with, you know, right off the road.
Yeah, Pete, I think as long as you mention that, I think I noticed when I was reading through it that the original plan called for two parking spaces per unit. And I think somewhere it says that, I don't know if it's a fake thing or whatever, that 2.5 is required. And I think that's what they were doing, putting in that extra parking area there to comply with the 2.5 requirement, requirement. But yes, that is a concern with, especially, they may mention, Peter, of pedestrian safety also with emphasizing the crosswalks and redoing them and making sure where they really couldn't be moved, that at least they're done to where they can be seen and noticed without hopefully somebody ever running into a problem there. I don't know, Larry or Paul, would you like to address the parking issue there?
I think we added that additional parking based on a comment. If it's better to eliminate it and make it more greener, you know, Larry, what do you think?
Well, I mean, I think that that area that you're talking about towards the front is also is where there's a central mailbox, you know, so it serves like two purposes there. It is a place to be able to pull into to get your mail, but it also provides additional parking for visitors or whatever to that, you know, instead of having them park on the street in front of a unit, that you do have a place to be able to have them safely sort of out of the way of any kind of emergency vehicle that may want to come now. It's really a preference, whether or not you think that 2.5 is how it will be utilized or if the, you know, if closer to the two is adequate. It's really, it's really, it's really a preference really of the town and the board.
What would you do with the mailbox then if it was eliminated? What would you have to do?
Well, you would just make it a sort of, just an offshoot from the main driveway coming in that you could pull sort of up to the box and then just keep going. So it would be just an island with the box and it would be, so there would be more green space because you take away those parking spaces.
All right. Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Charlie, can you?
I'll start, yeah, I'll start with Alan and then Amy in alphabetical order. Alan, if there's anything else, you muted yourself. Then it would be Amy. Alan, anything else?
Can you hear me okay?
You're here.
Am I unmuted, Charlie?
You're unmuted. You're on.
Okay, there's a couple of other Board of Health issues that I believe that we did send out to Mr. Silver's office that we were concerned with. Just want to kind of get it addressed now. These, this project has single septic tanks. Then it runs down to some sort of a pump system. And then that pump is discharged up into the leaching field. We had concerns where there is no reserved capacity because when you do have a pump system, you need to have that daily flow in case of power outages. That was one of our concerns. And then potentially with this pump system, what type of backup power are you going to have for this grinder-type pump? And based on the soils, from the soil logs, in the amount of flow, we're going to strongly suggest that you use treatment in this facility. You've got your four feet of naturally occurring soils, but below that, you've got silt well. So those are some of the things, the comments that my board has discussed. And you probably ought to get addressed because if you did have to put reserve capacity tanks in or backup power units, it would have to be addressed on the plan. The only other comment I have, it's more of a planning board comment, and we have not spent any time on this, is on the drainage, it looks like you're coming out of the basins and going into forbays. What have you guys provided for any TSS removals, total suspended solids? I didn't see anything in the drainage that is taking these TSSs out of the system before it gets into the groundwater.
Well, the calculation should be, within the calculations, the summary should be there, but we will be removing 80%. I mean, Rebecca, you can weigh in on that, but we would be complying with stormwater management.
How you're going to get? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, we have deep sump catch basins, we have the sediment forbays, and then we have the detention basins after that. But I believe that we, in the reports, we actually show calculations as to how we get to the 80%.
Okay. I just might suggest when you get to the planning board part of it that you might want to consider some catch basin inserts, some filter systems that might pick up some more of the TSSs prior to getting into the basins and getting into the groundwater. I know you've got some deep basins there. I just don't know under heavy rainfall and the fact that are these basins going to be cleaned on an annual basis? So you've got an operation or maintenance schedule. You might want to consider some catch basin filters for your TSSs. And that's the only comments I have, and that's just a comment I have personally, not from the planning board.
I'd just like to, I appreciate the comments and I just want to add that some of these things really get resolved in the definitive set of plans.
Okay. I just want to make sure they're where the comments, so you're not going back on a dozen times.
All right. Okay, so I'll move off from Alan and next would be Amy Troop. And I think, yep, she's unmuted.
Hi, everybody. My main concerns are going to be about the street, the frontage, how it lines up with Stop &amp; Shop. If you have 20 units and 20 cars coming out of there, it could possibly be 40 cars coming out of there. I just think that that's definitely something we need to think about for safety with 16,000 cars going through Halifax already. So that would be a giant concern of mine. The other concerns are pretty much going to be along the lines of what Bert stated, what is it going to look like? I'm definitely worried about the drainage as this area has had a lot of problems with drainage. And of course, Alan has stated that there's, what is it, clay, Alan, that you said? And that there could be water issues from that. I have friends in the area that have experienced issues from this and I would definitely urge something to be done about that. I would love to see Viveros' email. I think I've already asked Arlana for it. And I also would like to say that what Peter was saying about the lots and how they do have more frontage, if we could make it have the required frontage so that we don't have traffic issues, accidents from it, I think that would be really a good idea for everybody involved. So I'm kind of just on the end of this all and I'm repeating what has been said and I think the comments have been great. And I hope that you guys can use them to make the project work really well.
Awesome. Thank you. Thanks, Amy. Charlie, who else we got next?
We've got the police chief and I'm muting him if he's interested.
There he is.
He's not taking himself off. Give him another few seconds.
There he is.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having this hearing. So my one and only concern, I think, has been echoed by a member, a bunch of the members and also Amy, is the traffic and the alignment of the roadway to Plymouth Street. Other than that, you know, just want to come in and just kind of listen to all the comments and get an idea of what this project is going to look like.
Okay, Chief, they did recommend that, bottom line, that the schedule and the timing on the lights there at this created intersection be changed and altered. They, I looked at the traffic count as Amy had just suggested prior, that it did look like there would be an increase during peak hours for the, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was only like two to four cars average to the average daily car count during the morning and evening peak hours. I'd have to go back and double check that. But Chief, other than that, do you, you know, other than monitoring of the schedule of the lights and whatnot, if they reinforce the crosswalks and what they're for the added pedestrian traffic, do you see any other issues that you might be able to foresee coming up?
No, I agree. I actually like that idea of having the lights of the people exiting the proposed development not be coming in with the people from Stop &amp; Shop, you know, just where they could just go out on 106, either right or left, on their own, you know, time and then have the Stop &amp; Shop traffic do the same without having that issue with the, you know, head-on, potentially head-on collisions. I mean, as you mentioned, that's one of the, you know, busiest areas of Halifax. So I think, I'm sure there'll be some growing pains there and I think we'll have to monitor that situation. But I think, you know, we can work alongside the developers and traffic signal to figure out the proper array of lights there.
Yeah, that signal right there, Chief, for the most part, there isn't, that I've observed personally, you certainly know better with, not a whole lot of congestion at that light as opposed to the Walmart light and of course 58 and 106 light. That's, you know, I have seen during peak hours.
Yeah, correct.
You know, backups, but it doesn't seem to be a real issue with the Stop &amp; Shop light unless I'm wrong, unless...
Well, if everyone goes to Dunkin' Donuts, then we might have a big problem.
There you go.
That's always an issue there.
All right. Awesome. Thanks, Chief. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Charlie, here we got, we got the fire chief available.
Yeah, the next person is a, is, well, actually, if you wanted, do you want just town officials first?
Yes, please.
Okay, so our building inspector, I'm unmuting him. Rob, do you have anything or you have to have anything either way?
Hey, Charlie, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, my questions are going to pertain to the building code at this point and I know it's kind of preliminary. So to mimic some of the questions already asked, I think that the engineer should at least show the chief's vehicle to scale at the cul-de-sac, showing that he can make the turnaround, possibly in the entrance, showing how he makes the entrance with his largest vehicle. Based on what I'm seeing here, and nothing's been submitted to my office, I'm looking at townhouse quadplexes. And based on what I'm seeing, they're probably going to have to be sprinkled and they're also going to have to fall under construction control for the building code. So at that point, I will be asking for geotechnical plans and review and all the field tests to go with them. I think, again, because we're preliminary at this point, for fire sprinkler protection, we need to make sure that we have the water flow necessary. I've talked to the chief about it and I think the engineer should show that, that we can meet those requirements.
Hey, I'll open that up to Larry. Do you have anything you want to maybe add to that? You would know best, I would imagine, being the engineer. Take our track down with you.
No, that's fine. So we will be, there was nearly a comment about doing a hydrant test to determine what kind of flow you have there at 106. And then the sprinkler, if, are you saying, I guess the comment is saying that they would have to be sprinkled. I can't really comment to that, but if they, if that is a requirement, then they'll have to bring in someone who will basically have to size those units for each house and make sure that they have adequate pressure and volume in order to do that. I would imagine there may be an option of having maybe an enhanced alarm system. I don't know. But as far as the other comments, we will show fire truck pathway through the neighborhood because we do have to address the comment that was made about the cul-de-sac as far as being able to get the truck around there. So we will provide that other information as needed.
How about Mr. Brennan or Joe? Do you have any input or experience with as far as that goes with the sprinkle systems and whatnot? Hydrant pressure?
I have a comment.
All right, please.
Yeah, Paul Cusson. My understanding is that on a duplex-style building, that sprinklers are not required. They are required for a three-unit or four-unit building. And I don't have a lot of experience on controlled construction. My understanding of that these four units may not, under the code, require controlled construction, but we can double check that.
All right. Thank you. Sorry.
Mr. Chairman?
I thought that was you speaking. Yes, Pat. Do you have?
Mr. Chairman, Joe Pesnola.
Yes, Joe.
Yeah, on the matter of, you know, can the project provide sufficient water? Should the water main be looped and, you know, what are the existing volumes and pressures? This is where we get into potentially crossing over between what normally is preliminary and what could be construed as a piece of information that is needed to be provided within the process. So there's been a, there's been a concern raised and certainly a call for a hydrant flow test and some feedback on the results of that. Not saying that, you know, a detailed fire sprinklers... Not saying that, you know, a detailed fire sprinkler uh uh design needs to be generated or or finalized design of a water line, but at least some preliminary information to assist the board and departments on what the status and availability of of water for both domestic and and fire protection are here are. As far as the sprinkler systems, it's my understanding, similar to to Paul, that uh duplexes do not require sprinkling. Sometimes it has to do with the proximity of the the units to each other. So I think the fire chief um and the building inspector should be uh looking at at that and those requirements. And um obviously, the 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 four-unit buildings would would have to have uh fire suppression systems.
Okay.
Sorry, I believe that's what my my comment was.
Did you wanna add in on that?
Yeah, um, actually, one of my comments um was about the fire flow, um, because your zoning bylaws actually require um that the proposed hydrant system be capable of supplying the required fire flow plus fifty percent. Um, so I asked for documentation for that. In in the response from uh Larry's people, uh they say documentation for fire flow requirements can be conditioned and provided prior to a first building permit.
And that's, that's, yeah, Pat's point is 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 a good one. It it that defines the need for a waiver and therefore the information needs to be um advanced to define whether or not that waiver is required. So here, yes, it's beyond preliminary information, but but because of the nuance of both the concern raised um by members of the board as well as uh departments uh and this existence of the zoning uh requirement, you know, I I I think that additional information's justified, warranted, should be presented and uh, you know, either a waiver requested or or they won't need one.
Can something like that too, Joe? Can can that all, can a waiver as far as water pressure goes for a sprinkled system, can that even be uh conditioned? You know, can you wave like that?
Well, where it's a local requirement and 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 a very unique local requirement, I've actually never heard of another community having such a requirement within the zoning bylaw. The the applicant is is certainly at their um they could challenge the um the the necessity for that requirement and quote, you know, the National Fire Protection Association or or whatever sources they want to bring to bear and say that if we meet NFPA, then then that should suffice and your local requirement is above and beyond that and there's no justification for it and therefore that's that's why we we request the waiver. I don't know that they're gonna wanna do that because this is life safety. And obviously, the the community has has thought it important enough to put it in as as a zoning bylaw. It's enforced uniformly through the through the community. Um, and I don't, you know, I for one wouldn't wouldn't wanna go there. I would rather try to find a way to provide that. And essentially, there's always a way to do it. It's just, it just costs. Um, you can, you can provide a a fire pump to, and even if volume is a is an issue, uh fire cisterns to provide the volume and pressure necessary um to to meet any requirement. Um, now they they build very tall skyscrapers in Boston and get the water all the way to the top. So they, you know, it can be done. It's just a matter of cost, so.
So Paul and Larry and or both, if if you could look into that and and get back to the board to see uh see what our options would be uh at that point, I would greatly appreciate anything you might be able to find out.
Yeah, I I think we will uh take a hard look at that. My only concern was the local bylaw that says plus fifty percent. Um, I think if we can satisfy the requirements, um, you know, the fifty percent rule I've never heard of. But Joe's point about uh, you know, doing the testing and the pressure and all that stuff, uh, I think is is pretty valid. So we'll discuss it when our team members.
Oh, okay. Uh, Charlie, where are we? Anybody else?
In terms of town officials, no. We would then have the residents, we have several here um in our list of attendees. So let me start off.
Um, Charlie, if you could, uh, one of the town official on the planning board, she she did have a backup question that she forgot to mention. Could you uh put Amy Trup back on?
Yeah, sure. Yeah.
Excuse me, Mr. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, could you give me a uh a moment to uh to rebut what was said and just to clarify some issues that we just spoke about?
Uh, who am I speaking with?
Uh, Bill the inspector, Rob Picherelli.
Oh, okay. Sorry, Rob. I didn't recognize your voice.
No problem. Uh, just just again, to clarify, I understand this is preliminary and I'm only doing this as as advice to you. I I'm not citing any zoning. What I'm citing is from the building code. Okay, you have a quadplex. It's, and I'm not talking about the duplexes. It's a townhouse and under chapter nine in the building code, we can look at it together when the time comes. It's required to be sprinkled. Same thing with the townhouse that's over thirty-five thousand cubic feet. It's it's required to be under construction control. So all's I'm citing to you now is basic building code just so you can get out in front of it and have your water system prepared for it. That's all.
Awesome. Great. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Rob.
Yep.
So Bert, um, I believe Amy's now back to being unmuted.
Yes, Amy.
Hi, hi again. Um, so um I forgot to mention, one of my concerns was the buffer zone around um neighborhoods that we usually require. Um, that it it what that doesn't seem, what are you gonna do to buffer the maybe not so much O'Reilly's in the bank, but uh the residents in the area?
Uh, Mr. Cousins, I do, I did note that in in the plans that there were, it was referenced, but you, would you wanna speak to that in a little more detail?
Thank you, Brett.
Yep.
I think Larry is more prepared.
All right, Larry. Well, Larry, you've been, you've been in that area with the buffer zone, you know, with the golf balls, looking for them in there. So you've been deep in the woods over there.
I had a father-in-law, when he passed away, left me a thousand dozen golf balls. So so I, it didn't help my game.
And you lost.
I can lose them. I got others to lose. As far as, as far as buffers, usually when we talk about having uh buffers to neighboring properties, uh it's when the residents are gonna be in close proximity to other residential properties. In this case, if you look, every residential unit here is quite a distance to any other existing residential property. Um, so I really don't see that um there's a a a big issue as it relates to uh needing a buffer uh to make sure that you're not impacting the quality of 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 life of of another residential property.
Larry, but I I don't know. I think she's making, Amy, not to put words in her mouth, but I think she's making specific reference to one sixty-four thirteen uh from a conservation commission that's section two point oh two where it requires the fifty-foot no-touch buffer from bordering vegetated wetland.
Oh, I thought she was talking from a, I thought she was planning.
Twenty-five foot no-touch buffer.
Okay.
I I am, I am referencing from the planning board. I wasn't actually aware of the uh one sixty-four thirteen, but now I am. Um, I was more concerned with um three forty Plymouth Street and the fact that they used to have views of the golf course and now they're gonna have views of condos and a road.
Well, I I don't think they still have. I think that they still have views of the the golf course uh to the west uh and the southwest is still the same views in that direction. And if you're looking directly to the south, there's only one building that's uh sort of in that line of sight and that it's, and it's really not, it's running in the axis, it's running the other direction. So I don't really think that there's anything that in impedes the line of sight uh significantly from what's currently uh viewable from those two properties. Uh, can you see it on this on this view?
I I have the, I have the book right in front of me. I'm looking at the plan and it's the whole back of their lot is is most of the cul-de-sac and then the entire building that's in it's, that's behind their house.
Well, it's behind their property. Their house is situated significantly north of the the back of their property, but it it's not. Uh, I mean, to say, to say that someone should have the view through someone else's property to another property, um, I don't know as though that that's really what.
Well, no, 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 no. I'm just talking, I'm talking about, we have, um, I think, I'm sorry, I don't have the uh exact um bylaw right in front of me. I can look it up and email it to you if you would like.
That would be great.
And I will, and I will do that, but I I wasn't meaning, you know, for view, but I was definitely meaning because we have a bylaw about it. That's all.
Okay, if you could, and I will definitely look at that and see what, see what we can do about it.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
All right, Charlie, where are we on our list? Do we have anyone else?
Okay, so for, we have a number of residents I can, but I wanted to say for the residents who are gonna be participating, we need your full name as part of the record of this meeting. So if you're listed without a full name right now, you'll need to begin by identifying yourselves. So the first person on that list is
Charlie, I'd like, Charlie, I'd like to start with the Butters if if.
Well, there's, there's no, I I don't have a list of the Butters.
Okay, all right.
They're enough, every, I mean, you still have enough time to hear from everybody.
Okay.
So if if it was twenty people, I would understand, but I don't know who's in a butter and who's not on this list.
All right.
So the first person here is Rick M. I'm gonna unmute Rick M. And so we'll see if Rick M. will identify and uh wanna speak to anything.
Rick, are you there?
I don't see Rick, no.
Rick M., he's not, he's not unmuted.
He doesn't wanna go. Okay, that's fine. Um, next person is listed as taxpayer. I'm gonna unmute taxpayer. If taxpayer wants to identify, um then they'll be able to speak to us. And doesn't appear so. Okay. Uh, next one is Thomas Alger with the space between the Thomas and the Alger.
Mr. Alger?
I I don't have anything to say.
And so it's Tina Alger. My grandson is here with his computer to show us how to use Zoom.
Okay. Um, so Tina, you're also listed as Tina Alger. Do you, so are any of the Algers here, do they have anything to say at this point?
Yeah, I do.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah.
Go ahead, the mic's yours.
Yeah, we're in a butter and um we have a series of ditches behind our house. And I think the town knows, John Peck knows, Larry knows. We know that there is a big problem. And we met with uh John Peck, with Larry, our three sons, my husband and myself. We all went through this of what would be the best thing to do. We brought it, Larry and John brought it to the conservation and it was all approved. John had it surveyed. Everything was fine, but John had a problem with some finances and couldn't do it. So um I heard tonight that that would be included, those plans that um the conservation approved three years ago or four years ago. And uh that's all I have to say. We'd be happy to have that fixed.
Okay.
It looks good.
Right. Thank you very much.
That, I believe, is everybody for tonight, Bert. Um you had the board, you've had the town officials, you've had the consultant and, you know, folks from the developer or consultant. I think everybody's had an opportunity for tonight.
Okay, that's awesome. Uh, Paul, Larry, uh, do you think, is it necessary? Do 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 we need to go through a complete list of uh all the bullet points that were made tonight? You know, as as far as uh what information that you're gonna be researching and getting back to uh a completed waiver list site, you know, is what I'm talking about. We pretty much have all that.
I think, I think I'm pretty clear as far as what we need. I'm pretty clear as to what we need to do from our end and we will also be looking for a a follow-up letter from uh uh from from uh from Henry and then uh I think that it'll only be their letter that may, will be coming again, I would think.
The letter from Larry, I'm sorry?
Uh, from Pat, Pat would be providing another letter.
Oh, oh, oh.
All right. And so so it, so once we get Pat's letter, we'll uh we'll we'll address whatever follow-up comments or take it another step. And we will address the other issues that were raised tonight. And we'll add that to a response uh to the board.
That'd be great. Uh, yes, the up, the updated waiver list, that's the big thing, because we obviously had some communications screw up but, you know, crossfire there that we we didn't get or we did get. And so I would be very much interested in seeing that updated list. We we do need that. We'll do the research on those items uh as far as uh uh our town council with on the uh on the on the ownership issues and the easement issues. We'll hopefully try to get that cleared up. Uh, how about if we uh set a date for uh for our next meeting uh at this point?
Well, I would like to comment just before you set that date that I was really impressed by Tina's Zoom Zoom skills. I think she did a great job, because I know that we really wanted to make sure that that she could be part of this process. And I think that that uh was very important and I'm glad to see that she was able to do that.
Thank you, Larry.
All right.
And Bert, just so you know, uh, Tom, we got a message from Thomas Alger, at least listed as at what stage, stage of the project would the drainage be addressed? I would think it would be as part of the entire project. You're gonna have several more meetings. And so if there are drainage issues, that would be one of the issues that would be brought up at subsequent meetings.
Yes, uh, I believe it's on our, well, what I say our, uh, Joe's uh initial uh suggested outline for our meetings. It it looks like it would be covered either on our third or our fourth meeting specifically, unless, you know, of course, it's a, it's an important enough issue and whatnot that uh needs to be discussed prior to that, but it it is on the general agenda uh on our outline for when uh we would be discussing specifically drainage issues.
Okay, and Pat Brennan wrote, uh, as the consultant for the board, I'm reviewing the drainage for the board. So it will be reviewed and further discussed.
Awesome.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I might, at that point before deciding on the next meeting, um, I I I think it's important to kind of go over what I've laid out here and let everyone kind of know what the board's pleasure is for the topics next meeting. What I, what I had um laid out for the the second meeting was a traffic study presentation by the applicant, peer review of traffic report, fire and police department comments, uh, and then presentation of detailed civil engineering and wetland design by the applicant. That's where the drainage would would, the detail, the a lot, lot more of the detail would happen with regard to the drainage if if there's enough time. What I heard tonight was there's enough, I think, concern and questions with regards to maybe not the tr- traffic generation, but the the alignment and of the signal or the intersection with the modifications to the signal. Uh, I might suggest that, you know, the the board go ahead and 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 do the traffic study presentation by the applicant. It's a, it's a hundred and twenty-five page traffic report done by Green International. Um, the as as Pat said, uh, Gillan has done a peer review of that traffic report and and provided a a report. Um, and if Representative Green International could be at the meet at the meeting and and Gillan, then we could find, we could hear from those experts, uh, what the results of the traffic study is, what what results of the peer review were, and then afford the ability for, you know, questions to be asked uh by the board or or uh departments with regards to the concerns uh that were that were raised.
All right, would would Alana send in notifications, Joe, that we'd like them to attend the Zoom on next Zoom meeting?
No, I I I think that, yeah, the project team can can talk internally to Green and uh Pat can reach out to Gillan uh from from that standpoint.
Joe, if I, Joe, if I may? Joe, what I'm what I'm suggesting is that between now and the next meeting that uh Bill Scully of of Green, who uh was responsible for the report, that they uh kind of discuss it between themselves a little bit further and come up with a a conclusion between the both of them as to which is the best way to handle the alignment and 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 that sort of thing. And then hopefully at the next meeting, um, you know, uh, agree on on a plan.
Oh, and 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 at the, obviously, that's it's up to the board, um, and and boards act differently with regards to these uh outside conversations. Um, my opinion is that they're they're very helpful, but they're they're just that. They're outside conversations. And if those two, uh, if Mr. Scully and Mr. Gillen can be at the next next meeting and and have had those conversations, all the more efficient um to uh that the that the meeting will go. I I I certainly um again would would recommend that.
So, Joe, they would have the the conversation themselves and just report to the board at the next meeting the the results of those conversations?
Yes, I mean, I even more so if Green could have a response to the Gillen peer review, then, you know, that that would be kind of memorializing the um their their discussions and and so forth. Uh, so what you're trying to do is take an issue and at a meeting, discuss it and hopefully resolve the issues and put that issue to bed. Um, and then afford anyone that that wants to talk about those issues, listen to those those comments, ask the questions, uh, or afforded the ability to do that. So, um, that happens. And then, you know, if we if we don't talk about drainage, then, you know, the board doesn't have to take drainage questions on that night. And and you set that agenda for for another night. I also had a fire and police department comments, which kind of
Right.
do dovetail into the alignment uh of the roadway. If if Larry can get the swept path analysis done, which is the maneuvering of the fire vehicle through the site, you know, and pass that by the fire, the fire chief prior, then that can be presented. And, you know, the i- if the fire chief would indulge the board and and spend another night on Zoom, then, you know, he he can uh chime in on on his either acceptance of that or whatever modifications they're they're looking to do. Um, that also could involve the i- if if available, the additional discussion and presentation of information on the water because that that's a fire issue. And those those may be enough issues that, you know, you can take that um detailed civil engineering and and drainage and and push it down a meeting. It's it really is up to the board of what you want to tackle. And these are, these are guidelines. They're not set in stone um with regards to how the meeting uh flows. That's that's at at your discretion, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
All right, well, I I agree with you, Joe. I I do think, I don't know how the other board members feel on it, but uh I I personally feel that uh there's been enough questions raised and and comments made regarding the the roadway, the alignment, the uh, the the traffic, like the issues of entry and exit. And and I do think that uh uh, that that's a an issue that, like you said, Joe, should be discussed and hammered out and whatnot. I'm I'm hoping that Larry can uh could get in touch with uh Chief Averas there and uh and and actually walk through. I I think the chief would be more than uh more than helpful and and willing to to do that to as far as uh turning radiuses, entryways in in into the uh into the uh e- egress into the into the property with a with a fire truck of the dimensions that were mentioned earlier. You know, the wheelbase, the length and that type of thing. So hopefully, Larry, I think that that can get ironed out and and we'll be able to uh make uh make issue of that on on the next meeting uh with the fire. Uh, as far as the water goes, uh, if we can find definitive that, well, I'm I'm pretty sure according, I I took it from the comments from the building inspector, that there really isn't a if and or but about a sprinkler system for the quad units. Uh, you know, it's uh more than three family, three slash four is going to require a sprinkled system. Uh, I think that has to be uh pounded out as far as a compliance with uh with our own particular local zoning requirement, like Joe had mentioned. Uh, he he really is not familiar with it. It's one of the few towns that he's ever heard of having it. But nevertheless, let let's work on that. Let let's see if uh either it can uh it meet the general standard or or whatever we have to do, you know, either waive the fifty percent or compromise on the fifty percent, depending on on what needs to be done. We will, let's work on that for the next meeting. Let's include that on 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 one of the discussions. Uh, I don't know, Joe, how involved is the presentation going to be on the civil engineering and the wetlands design? That it it was pre-mentioned. Uh, I mean, are we talking a couple of hours on that or is it something that uh is just presented to the board and and?
It's it's really the board's pleasure, uh, pleasure as as uh as Pat said. Uh, we really don't, uh, the engineers don't want to put the board to sleep diving too deep into some of the drainage details, but um, you know, I I I think it it should be a a subject matter. There's some issues with regards to the the neighbors. Um, uh, that that were were raised. Um, so I think that, you know.
Yeah, but I, yeah, I'm sorry, but I don't believe that that would be ready for that next meeting because Pat's going to be looking at what we've given him so far, and he's still going to be needing uh the revisions to the drainage counts and so forth in order to take it to the level of being able to really talk to the to the board about that. So I'm thinking that drainage should go to the next, the meeting after that, maybe.
Okay, that's important, Mr. Chairman, as what as far as what you want to make them if these the discussion on these topics as efficient as possible. So, uh, as Larry said, maybe push that that item to the the meeting after.
Definitely. There there's no sense bringing it up if we if everybody isn't prepared and willing to uh, you know, to to have all the information presented. Uh, Joe, well, anything else from uh you think we could, you know, pull off the presentation of the, you know, the wetland design to the third meeting? Is there something else that can take the place? We can move it up into uh into our next monthly meeting?
Well, we have, yeah, we have the third meeting have water supply, so we're moving that up, so.
Moving that up until next month?
We're moving that, yeah, water supply. If if the applicant's team thinks that they could get some information on that in that timeframe.
Yeah, I would say traffic, traffic, fire and water would be uh that next meeting.
Okay, that sounds that sounds enough.
I think two, you think two weeks?
I'm thinking that it might be a very quick meeting, you know, if uh if we can. We'll start out with that. Let's do that then. We'll we'll plan on the traffic study presentation. Uh, the fire chief with the with the truck and the water issues and and we'll get into the draining issue. Now we just uh need to come up with a date. Uh, how does uh Wednesdays seem to be okay for everyone? Bob, Pete, Dan?
Yes.
Yep, that's fine.
That okay with you?
That's okay.
All right, what do we uh, what are we going with?
Well, Mr. Chairman, four weeks would be December sixteenth, three weeks would be December ninth. I don't imagine you're doing this on the twenty-third.
I I think the second or the ninth. I don't I don't know, Larry. I I don't think we need personally a lot of time. But the ninth certainly would be okay, or the or the second, either one.
Well, I don't, wow, I don't know how much time you need, but I know much time we need, okay?
Well, we're going to just be at that meeting. We're just going to be, my understanding is that the traffic engineers, we're going to be discussing it between themselves and the fire and police.
We're going to have to deal with the fire and the water.
I think it, I think it's the board's decision to make that that.
Yeah. I understand. We're just discussing.
Right, uh, I I'm leaning more towards the 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 sixteenth being the third week of the of the month. Uh, to give uh plenty of time to to compile the information, uh. I don't know. What what do you guys feel?
Sixteenth is fine. I like it.
The sixteenth, Bob, that okay with you?
Sixteenth is fine.
Okay, let's go, uh, twelve sixteen. Uh, how's that look with everybody else? Uh, seven PM on a Zoom meeting, we'll go there.
Uh, I'm available, Larry. You're okay?
Uh, I believe uh one of us will be available.
All right.
I think we may have another conflict, but that's okay.
Joe, Pat, uh, how are you set for that? Uh, would that be? Which one was that?
Pat, I'm available.
Oh, good. Pat, do you think, is that enough time for you two to uh to have all those uh figures, the updates and all that thing reviewed and and comments available to the board?
Yeah, I can certainly review what Larry, you know, the revised plans and the response. Uh, I I don't know if they've revised the drainage calculation, so I may not have that, but um, I'll I'll certainly ask uh Gillan to be on that meeting for the traffic peer review. And I'll talk with him tomorrow about um discussing the his peer review letter with uh Green International, um, so that can happen.
Joe, how's the sixteenth sound with you?
Sixteenth is is fine. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just had one more um point of order. Um, as far as transfer of information, um, in the coming weeks, I'll work with Elena to to make sure that we've got a good, solid handle on on this information that was submitted over the past several months and that all information going forward is is funneled through uh through Elena and and making sure that the record is is complete and that that she and I are tracking, you know, all the all of the documents. Um, I I did note that I think Mr. Mr. Diaz had said that he had sent comments from the Board of Health directly to Mr. Silver. I I don't know if if those got copied to the the Board of uh the the Board of Appeals. Um, but if again, if 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 we could get one one steady stream of 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 information being um being funneled through the board, uh, happy to help her um track that. So when we get to the end of the process, we have a a comprehensive list of all documents that have been submitted.
That'd be great, Joe. Much appreciated. You you have all the contact numbers and emails and all that?
I do, I do.
Okay, great. All right, unless there's uh anything else, I'm going to uh accept the most.
Couple of, I have a couple of quick, quick things. The, if it's okay.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, the metal building on the other lot and the um application for uh the town residents to have some preference on the affordable housing, is it our um intention, if it's even possible, to make those conditions of the special permit? In other words, are they going to be, how how are they going to be addressed starting tonight? These these are the two things I see could kind of fall to the wayside because there's so many other issues.
I can answer that. I I can answer that question as a challenge.
Bottom line, uh, when I, when Joe had made mention of it and and also Mr. Cusson, there is an actual process that has to be uh done and submitted, first one by the town and and uh Mr. Pesnola recommended that uh it's it's kind of a process, a drawn-out process, so we really should uh get with the coordinator for the in charge of the affordable housing here in Halifax and put that together so we can start get the necessary forms. Because I I believe the figure was seventy-five percent of the uh, at best, seventy-five percent of the affordable housing units would, for lack of a better term, have uh Halifax preference, whether it be uh employees, uh, people living in or attending the schools here in Halifax or uh actual uh residents. So it is a process. I I do believe we uh that uh we were going to look into that to find out where Joe had recommended. It's something we kind of want to, want to get the ball rolling on as soon as possible because I I get the impression it's a pretty drawn-out policy policy.
So do we have any direction for anybody to start that or how are we leading it tonight?
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I I mean, we can give you some proposed language. Joe and I are both very familiar with typical language that's included in the permit to include local preference. It's it's something really as simple as uh, you know, the the board hereby uh uh is requiring local preference. Um, and then we state in the regulations what that local preference is. One of the things I did not add was that anybody working for a local company is also considered local. The local is taken right out of the regulations, so that would be in the permit itself. And then in the permit itself, it would say that the board is responsible for obtaining that local preference from mass housing. And uh typically it says, we're, you know, the the applicant is willing to assist where possible.
Uh, Paul, I would greatly appreciate if you could forward that off to uh Alana's attention in an email.
I can, sure.
We would have the uh language. Thank you so very much. I.
Yeah, I'll take it right from another permit. Yep.
That'd be great. Is that okay with you, Dan? Is that?
Yeah, and uh and what about the building issue? Is that something because it's on a separate lot? Is that something that we can make a condition of this permit so it happens or what's our opinion about this? Where are we going with that one?
The you're talking about the metal space building on the adjacent lot? Where it's now become a non-conforming lot because of the subdividing of of this particular property where where the roadway is going. Uh, it's within the side setback. I don't know, uh, I don't have the information, Dan, who actually, I I believe it's Mr. Peck that owns the owns the property. But uh where it is now, I I understood it to be as part of the Form A in the site plan issued by the planning board that there's language right there that says that building is supposed to come down.
So who's enforcing that?
Building, Building Department.
The Building Department, so we just, Dan, was that the question?
Yes, yes. Yeah, the Building Department would be uh responsible uh for making sure that that uh does is raised.
The the reality is, I think, it's the same, it it's the same ownership as the applicant, if I'm not mistaken. I think that's the same lot we're talking about. So that there is a.
I thought it was too, Peter. I I I don't uh know that for sure, but just looking at at the presentation, blueprints and whatnot, lot, it does look like, yes, it did. I understood it to be same, under the same ownership, which if it does say a condition uh of the subdividing now the into the three lots, it it should be enforced if it was agreed upon. I agree with you.
So is that something that we also can make a condition of this permit or is it a separate issue altogether?
I don't know, Dan. I'd I'd have to look into that, but maybe check with the building inspector on that. You know, with with the properties, with the properties of the same owner, however they are, two separate lots. I don't know if you can put a condition on on, say, lot one that affects lot two. I don't know that. I I I'd be surprised.
Mr. Chairman, Joe Pesnol, I would I would be careful about that and can going out outside of the bounds of the of the forty B and conditioning a lot that's not part of the project.
Okay, I, okay, thank you. Anything else, Dan?
No, that's it.
All right, then, uh, uh, seeing uh no need for a further discussion, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting until our next hearing date of December sixteenth, two thousand twenty at seven PM by means of Zoom. I just wanted to say that.
Do we need to vote on the date or not?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting and continue the hearing on December sixteenth at seven PM by Zoom.
Peter, let's let's vote on the um motion first for the next me uh hearing date of twelve sixteen twenty. I'll I'll accept the motion if you'd like to make that, please.
I'm gonna make a motion to continue the the hearing until uh December sixteenth at seven. I'm going to make a motion to continue the, the hearing until, uh, December 16th at 7:00 PM via Zoom.
2020? Do it in a, so I have a motion and a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I'll, uh, call for a voice vote. Uh, Jerry?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Uh, it passes, uh, unanimous 500. Uh, so while our next meeting date will be, uh, 12, 16, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Okay, Peter, now, sorry to interrupt you before. I will accept the, uh, motion to adjourn the hearing till that, till that date.
Uh, I'll make a motion to adjourn the hearing, uh, until we continue as we agreed upon.
And do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, ladies. I appreciate it. Wasn't anywhere near as bad as what I thought. Thank you very much.